At this time, I would like to ask Steve Gregson to approach the podium and lead us in our invocation. Steve, this pastor of the New Union and New Bible United Methodist Church.
Thank you. Let's pray. Dear Father, we come to you together, a blessed and grateful people. We thank you for the beauty that surrounds us in this area, and we thank you for the people that are part of this community. We pray that you will bless the people of this community with opportunity as they have ability, with generosity as they lack ability, and charity for every single one of them. I, Father, especially, lift up to you this group of people who have been generous, who have been selfless, who have chosen to serve their fellow members of this community in this way. Bless them with wisdom in the conversations that they have, and bless them with a good spirit in the way that they speak to each other. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, I would like to ask Sergeant Deanna Barrett to approach the podium. Deanna, who is 100% service-disabled veteran, she served in the Army Reserves from 1987 to 1997. She was deployed for Operation Desert Shield and Desert Storm in 1990, just two weeks after her marriage to her husband Drew Barrett. She served as a military police officer until 1991. She retired in 1997 at the rank of E-5 Sergeant. Diana, or Deanna, Drew, and their son Ethan reside in the smart community of McMinnville, and now we would like her to lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And before Deanna steps down, I want to present a plaque to her, but also, before we do that, in recognition of our President's Declaration of November being National Veterans and Military Families Month, I've asked Commissioner Joseph Stotts to lead us in the Star Spangled Banner.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see my thoughts early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Through the stars and bright stars through the perilous night? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting there? Gay blue through the night, that flag was still there? Oh, say, the stars spangled banner yet waving? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
With that, I call this meeting over. Call the roll, please.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
David Dunlap.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Deborah Evans.
Here.
Steve Lynn.
Here.
Richard Gristle.
Here.
Stephen Helton.
Here.
Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Lori Jenkins.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Kristy Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Spartman.
Here.
Joseph Stotts.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to read the minutes or dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve them. I have a motion by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Savage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, I would entertain a motion to adopt the docket.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Helton.
I make a motion to amend the docket and add in a recognition for Kenneth Medlin to be behind employee recognition Melanie Lanier.
We need a motion for the docket first.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ruble, second by Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Now I'll make that amendment.
Commissioner Helton.
I made the amendment to add in Kenneth Medlin recognition after Ms. Melanie.
We have a motion from Commissioner Helton, we have a second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner England.
I need to make amendment on everybody's table. They should have an item that says item number seven. I'd like to add, if you don't care, to, how about 5A, is that okay with you, sir? 5A to bring that up for the addition to the members to the registry committee. That be okay at 5A?
We have a motion to amend the docket.
Say yes.
We have a second by Commissioner Stotts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So that will be 5A. Anyone else want to speak to the motions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to table item number one and make that motion.
All right, we have a motion to table item number one from Commissioner Ruble. We have a second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, we got some information today, and we don't have all the information we need, so we decided to discuss this later day. We made that decision in financial management this afternoon. Thank you.
All right, let's have the vote. What we want to do is we want to vote on the amended docket, and I need a motion for that. Oh, I'm sorry, we haven't voted on that. We need to vote on taking item number one off. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we'll vote on the amended docket. Commissioner England made the motion, Commissioner Taylor made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the docket's set. Next, we would entertain a motion to either read the minutes or suspense of the reading of the minutes.
I jumped ahead on you, didn't I?
Okay, I'm sorry about that. All right, well, as far as I know, we don't have a public comment. I didn't get anything on that, so I'm assuming we don't have one. Next, we'll do employee recognition, and Executive Haley, if you would.
As county executive, it's always a grateful thing to appreciate our employees and recognize those who have given extended service to our community. Without our employees, we can't offer the services that our citizens expect. And so whether it's in sanitation, whether it's in, you know, in the Sheriff's Department, but one of the key components of government is our finance department. And our deputy finance director, who had worked for 30 years as a loyal and abiding employee of the Warren County Commission and Government, has decided to retire from here. Actually took a job in another location after 30 years, but we wanted to recognize her 30 years employment with Warren County Government tonight. So if Melanie Lanier, and if your family would like to come forward as well, we'd like to present you with certificate of appreciation for your many years of service to Warren County. And so, a lot of what she has done over the years, particularly in the transition to a new finance director, Justin Cotton, has been extremely important, and so that transition made everybody's, you know, life a whole lot easier. So sad to see you go, but proud that you've taken employment somewhere else, and that's going to make you happy as well. So we would like to present you with this certificate, and we want to appreciate it. Everybody would like to stand.
I started here right out of high school, and I was led by two awesome individuals, Jimmy Brock and Joe Powers. They taught me everything. There was no computers back then. There were, but they were on a file cabinet. I ran the first county payroll and paid the first vendor payment in June of 1990. Did it by myself because they weren't about to touch those computers. And I had no idea that it would come to this. I truly expected to retire from Warren County, but there's a new chapter opened up for me, and I'm excited about it. I'm working for Rutherford County, and they have just opened their arms to me. It's been awesome. So thank you for this tonight, and I greatly appreciate it.
Sometimes what we do as elected officials is sometimes a sad moment, but when we're able to lift up a family and celebrate the life of someone who's touched our lives in so many ways and for so many years. And so the tragic passing of Kenneth Medlin, who was our Fair Board President, came as a great shock to all of us. And along with most of us, we've been grieving over the last few weeks over his untimely loss. And so tonight, we wanted to recognize the family and do something a little special tonight in appreciation of the many years of service that Kenneth and his family have given to Warren County. And so, thank Commissioner Helton and Commissioner Taylor, wanted to come down as well, and if the family would love to come and gather around with me, we're going to do a couple of little things that I think will mean a lot from us and to you as well. You know, having known Kenneth my whole life, went to grade school with him, graduated high school with him, have worked with him on so many projects, it's near and dear to my heart to be able to share a moment like this with the family. And so, being teachers, you know, these two girls touched my life, being employee of Warren County Schools, Jewel touched all of our lives in the cafeteria for so many years as well. And so with that, I want to do this proclamation and then a couple of little things to add with it. So whereas Kenneth Wayne Medlin, the son of Charlie and Edith Davis Medlin, was a Warren County native who proudly called McMinnville, Tennessee his hometown, and whereas Kenneth graduated from Warren County Senior High in 1973, started a career with local industry and then married the love of his life, Jewel Burks. Whereas a young adult, Kenneth began as a volunteer with the Warren County Fair Association and served four decades in various roles, including Fair Board President. Whereas Kenneth and Jewel's marriage produced two community-minded daughters, Becky and Tracy, who along with their husbands, Joey Clark and Brian Scott, have continued the tradition of being active Fair Board members as volunteers. Whereas Kenneth was an avid sportsman who loved the outdoors and took great pride in teaching his hunting skills both family and friends. Whereas Kenneth enjoyed coaching his daughters in softball and assisted the athletic staff at Warren County High School in multiple sports programs, including softball and football, where he was also a member of the infamous Chain Gang Crew. Whereas this remarkable man scoutness hours of community service with numerous volunteer organizations has made a tremendous impact on Warren County on improving the quality of life for all of his residents. Whereas it's only befitting that a grateful people recognizes the work of this outstanding volunteer and citizen and celebrate the merits that he earned during his lifetime. Therefore, I, Warren County Executive Jimmy Haley, do hereby respectfully honor the memory of Kenneth Wayne Medlin and present this proclamation to Jewel, Becky, Joey, Tracy, Brian, and especially to granddaughter Hattie Suzanne during this November 18, 2019 Warren County Commission meeting. And along with that, in order to recognize Kenneth and all of his accomplishments and that we do not forget him, this brick will be placed downtown in Kenneth's memory so that the family and friends will never forget, you know, Kenneth's accomplishments and what he's done for Warren County. So we want to thank you and the family. We know it's been hard. We know it's been difficult. I've also got a little something for you as well, because you were the life of his life. So, would anybody like to speak, commissioners? If your family would like to. So we appreciate the members of the Fair Board that are here tonight, and for the family for coming and allowing us to give this honor to you. And so it is a special moment for us, being able to give back. It's also a special moment for you because, you know, I think, understand and appreciate the commitment we have and the love that we share with Kenneth for this many, many years. So, thank y'all. We love you. We're there for you.
and I would call Executive Haley back up.
In your pocket, I think on your desk is a November report from the two conferences that I attended to give you a little update on where the state stands, and also from TCSA. And so just want to give you an update. ESG is still continuing work. The mitigation, if you'll peek outside of this door on this building, has begun, and work at the jail. And at the Health Department, they're all over the place working. And so, they're on time now, and the schedule is looking good. I had a call with FEMA today on additional possible add-ons that we can hopefully receive some contributions from the federal government to offset our flood damages. And I think the call is to Superintendent Glenn on Monday. Of course, the school system's got several things, I think Mr. Cox is going to announce, but the give grant's going to be big. So, the land and tax sale will be coming up, so I've been working with Myra and with our attorneys to get those deeds and titles cleared, and so we can put that list together. We've also found about $90,000 in unclaimed property, additional property over the last 18 months that we'll be able to retrieve and put in the general fund as well. So, somebody got any questions?
Question.
Yes, sir.
What would be the actual price of roof for the department and roof for the courthouse?
What do you mean, the exact price?
The exact, the bid, the price.
We have a contract with ESG, which is a collective contract that's an energy performance program.
I'm aware of that.
So that includes all of that.
But it's a broken down.
Well, it depends on what you mean by broken down. We did not have a contract with individual roofers. ESG had the contract with them. So it's really not a public bid as such. ESG went out and asked for people to bid or to make spec offers for the roof project, for the security project, for the jail, all of these different projects. So the energy conservation project, which included this building in the mitigation on this, was taken care through ESG. So they put the offer out there, they reviewed the bids, they reviewed the specs, they reviewed what was given to them, and chose local contractors in almost all cases for the work that they did.
It's public information, though, isn't it?
The contract with ESG is in the line items that were included in that project work. And so roof was collectively, I think, is one price tag.
I'm through.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
On the opioid crisis, the update on the lawsuit, can you kind of highlight that? I'm very interested in that.
Well, we have a deadline, either opt-in or opt-out, and so most of these lawsuits, you gotta realize that the main pharmaceutical company declared bankruptcy. And so that's complicated the matters a lot. And so Attorney Robert Bratcher and our District Attorney Lisa Zavianas have been discussing the opioid lawsuit. I had a presentation from the Attorney General's Office in Knoxville. They gave us updates, and so we were supposed to give a letter if we were opting out on that, which we decided not to do. And so we're still included in the lawsuit at this point. How long this is going to drag out, how many years, what the final settlement's going to be, not sure. Most of the money will probably go into the state, not to the local communities that have been impacted by the opioid crisis. So, other than that, we're just awaiting more information. I got a box of lawsuit papers from New York that was almost a foot high, and I continue to get those sent to my office for legal review. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, debt obligation report, or any questions on that? All right, next item is the Finance Department report.
Thank you, Chairman. You have my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Helton, second by Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, next is the Highway Department.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have my report. If there's any questions, I'd rather ask Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen.
Move to a do.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone want to speak to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Levy.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Roberts with the Sanitation Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, of the court, you have my report. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Bolden. Anyone want to speak to the motion?
I just wondered, Josh, are you having any luck? I know you're probably not. Carboard, that's a big issue. Still no luck.
Now, we are still recycling our carboard. We're hauling it around 80 miles round trip to Tallahome for free, but it is being recycled and is keeping it out of Winfield. But we don't know how long that's going to last. They could cut us off tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Next, we have Warren County Schools report, and Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, I think you have my report. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lee, a second by Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to the motion?
I'd like to make a comment. I understand you've got some news from Saturday night you want to share.
Saturday night, yes, sir. Yes, sir, that was a good night. I was trying to think of what you were talking about, but I should remember that.
I saw it on Facebook.
Yeah, yeah, just honored to report that Warren County Board of Education was awarded the school board, Tennessee School Boards Association School Board of the Year. We are very proud of those that served on our Board of Education and the work that they do, and, you know, I think they're honored to receive that out of 140 school districts in the state that Warren County can say they're the best school board in Tennessee this year. So we appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Medlin, for that. Also, one other item in your packet, we do want to kind of brag on our students and teachers a little bit. We did, we have 100% of our students registered for Tennessee Promise this year, so that was a good milestone. Appreciate our teachers working hard and our students getting all that done, so we are very proud of that as well.
I'd like to make another comment.
Yes, sir.
And as you know, we're short on mentors.
Yes, we are.
So anybody in this room can do that.
We're about 15 short, I think, now, so if you want to do that, I can help make that happen for you.
All right, with that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we have the Sheriff's Department report. I believe Bo's got that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court. You should have the report in front of you. I'd be glad to answer any questions now if you have any.
We have a motion and a second. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Bo. I'm sorry, folks, I'm still getting used to voting, because it doesn't feel right voting up here. All right, we'll go into committee reports, and we'll start with Budget Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't have anything to report other than we set our regular meeting night for the first Tuesday of every month. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Building and Grounds. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Buildings and Grounds, this week met and appointed the Vice Chair and the Secretary. Also, we have a meeting scheduled for December the 2nd at 6:30 in the Dogwood Room. Items of discussion that evening was the ESG program and the feedback from that program and the different areas that we're working at right now with the Health Department and the courthouse and the jail, and some updates on that. ADA compliance was discussed, and we're still moving forward with that, and the state is recognizing our efforts to be in compliance. And like I said, December the 2nd, 6:30 in the Dogwood Room. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, Economic and Agricultural Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Economic and Agriculture Committee at this time does not anything to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Education.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we, our committee, met with some representatives from the school system, and we went to the Warren County Middle School to tour their brand-new fitness center and to participate in the ribbon cutting. You know, this was $100,000 worth of brand-new equipment placed at the school, which is allowing the kids during the school hours to take part of this fitness program. And by doing this, it reaches out to 800 students. So it's... So it's, um, and also it has an additional, um, area that's attached to it that's gonna have cardio equipment that will, should be in place by the, by Thanksgiving, they said. There's another hundred fifty thousand dollars in that grant, which is gonna come by next year to do an outdoor obstacle course. This facility's also gonna be open to the school, um, system employees and retired teachers, um, the after hours from three fifteen to six thirty during the weekdays. So this is just a great thing that has happened for our community. At our meeting, Mr. Cox also shared with us that three of the programs that they have at this, at the high school have been certified, called Certified Pathways. And what that basically means that when a student has entered into this particular program, he or she will be ready to go to work when they're, when they're done. So they have a pathway to a career. And those three programs were the Megatronics Pathway, the Welding Pathway, and the Nursery, Nursing Services Pathway. And we did not end without just the biggest bang of all. I guess really the biggest bang came Saturday night when you recognize the school board. But he was able to, um, share with us that we would receive the gift grant, which stood for the Governor's Investment in Vocational Education. This is a huge thing for our county. I mean, huge. And just in the past two or three, couple of years, our county has received fifteen million dollars to promote technology in this county. And it's been because of partnerships. And one of those partnerships, and a person very much involved is Mr., is Commissioner Randy England sitting here with the TCAP program. But that's a gift pro, grant. Took a lot of preparation, um, by several folks, but of, most of the hands are with Tracy Rosinger and in her program at school. And this, the instrument's gonna have a machine shop program that will be different than anything that's happened in the state of Tennessee. Um, so a lot still to go on with getting that, you know, installed in the schools, equipment purchase, the instructors hired, the training, just the whole aspect of it. But this is a great thing for this county. Um, and when I, when I was mentioning to you also, there was a great article in our paper that really outlined all the different individuals that were involved in helping in the instrument meditation of this. And another one I don't, I want to leave out is the IDB Board. Um, Mr. Alexander is, is a part of this group of people too, and it said partnerships, how valuable that was. But you know, this was not, this paper was supposedly still on the desk of our governor who came to see Warren County and took a tour. And then it was, when he got home, I think it just endorsed his decision and thinking, we've made the right decision here and let's, let's do this for Warren County. So we're really very excited about that. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December the second at five o'clock. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown, while you're, well, I've already let you sit down. Would you go ahead and cover the Legislative Committee also? It's not on there, but we need to get a, an update on that.
Okay. I will. Um, our committee is so successful in saying that we have at least addressed every, um, item on the existing document. We have, um, now coming back with a couple more items that we're going, that we want to add, fine tune again. And we're thinking by the end of this year, we're gonna have this document ready to go to the proper authorities to review. And then finally to our attorneys. And, um, and once it's completed, I would say the first of the year, we should be able to, um, bring this to the full commission to vote on.
Thank you. Financial Management?
Uh, Financial Management has nothing to present at this time.
Thank you, Justin. Health and Welfare, I will say that, uh, right now, our population at the Animal Control and Adoption Center is floating around seventy. Um, we're still looking for some part-time workers. So if you know anybody out there, just pass the word around. We are, you know, still looking for help down there and, uh, Sherry would greatly appreciate it. Yes, Deborah?
Um, I have a friend who applied one day last week and she was told they're no longer accepting applications, that they're interviewing now. Is that right, Mr. Haley, Executive Haley?
The, the applications we closed. Some people wanted to come in and give an application just in case there was some future openings. We hired a full-time person today and then we're also interviewing for that part-time position. So we should be able, uh, Sherry met, we did interviews, and we took her recommendation on the full-time employee, which was Ashley Bowden, who was hired today. So should, should work out well. Be a great addition to the staff at, at the animal center, so.
Thank you, Executive Haley.
Would you like to make an announcement about the flu shots that are gonna be free tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow at the Health Department, they'll have drive-by flu shots. I don't, that may not be the right way to say it, but, um, drive-through flu shots all day. You won't forget that. All right, Highway Bridge?
We have nothing to discuss at this time.
Thank you. Uh, next, Policy and Personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Safety?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have, uh, one of our ambulances in Shoville, Tennessee having to remount where we remount the box onto a new chassis. And, uh, the twentieth, uh, in a couple of days, uh, we'll be opening our bids on our new ambulance. And I hope the Financial Management can get on to that pretty quick so it can give us the, to go ahead and get that, the new ambulance ordered. But other than that, everything else is doing good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Uh, next, County Corrections Partnership?
Yes, we had a, uh, a, a meeting this last month and, uh, had, had a very productive meeting. We had ESG actually come in and give us an update, uh, with where they're at with the activities at the jail. A number of things are being done, everything from insulation to LEDs. I think, uh, all of the LED, LED lighting had been installed, uh, excluding some of the, uh, ones in the cells that had to be special ordered. Um, window tanning, uh, a lot of the AC units and, uh, heating units are supposed to be installed, uh, here in the next month. Uh, or actually, um, most everything had, had been complete there or, or moving forward there. Um, the dishwasher and, uh, ice machine should be in by now. Um, and the new wash machines and dryers, uh, are all coming in as well. Um, so that's all happening, basically gonna be happening here in the last bit of this month and, um, or the last bit of this year, I guess you'd say. And the big thing that's gonna be, the big weight that probably gonna be later in the year is the security system and some of the locks. Uh, that's gonna be the big thing that's gonna be, uh, be, uh, pushing us past, uh, the, the first of the year on that. Uh, we did also have Mr. Brad Price come in with Drug Court, uh, talk about their program, talk about what they've got going on. Basically, they're at this point where they need to expand. They're looking for, uh, additional space. Um, and, uh, they're actually looking for additional space outside of this building, outside of the administration building. Uh, of course, our committee reviewed it, uh, and we wanted to give our recommendation that there are, there is some space here in this building that we think might be fitting. Um, and so we make the recommendation that, uh, we would like to see it move forward and investigate it further. And actually, um, Executive Haley was not at that meeting to where we could speak with him at that time. Um, but, um, the question, I guess, was can we utilize some of those offices on the other side of the hallway from, from Drug Courts? We'd like to see that investigated further and, and that program expanded. We've got the, the new position that, uh, for the grant, for that, uh, new counselor, and basically they don't have any place to go. So, um, that's our recommendation. Our next meeting is gonna be December the fifth and it's gonna be a little bit special. We're gonna do that in Rutherford County. Um, the reason we're doing it in Rutherford County is we're gonna be looking at their workhouse and their program space that they've got. They've got an amazing facility. They've got, um, a, uh, a, a great program where literally, um, they had an inmate leave their program with eighty thousand dollars in the bank from their workerless program. Uh, I believe that, that accounts for a new start for that, uh, that inmate. Uh, so we're gonna go down there and look at that, look at what they've got going on, how they're making that work. And, um, again, that's gonna be December fifth and I believe the time is gonna be four thirty, um, in the afternoon there. Um, so that's all I've got at this time. Our population is two fifty-two at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Hilton. Next, the Redistricting Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have another report this time.
Thank you, Commissioner England. Uh, before we go into unfinished business, uh, in era, I did not confirm the County Executive Report nor the Debt Obligation Report. And I would like to, I'd like to, uh, go through that and confirm those. If I could get a motion on the County Executive Report, we have a motion by Commissioner Stout, a second by Commissioner Henson. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, Debt Obligation Report. Motion by Commissioner Owens, second by Commissioner Ripley. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we're going into unfinished business, um, and that is to confirm, uh, the IDB appointment. And when we, uh, last adjourned, uh, we tabled this, this, uh, vote because we had two candidates and, uh, Charles Curtis was here at that time and he explained to us, we have to have thirteen votes to approve, uh, the, uh, IDB Board member. So we have two candidates and we need to vote and everyone will get one vote. And we will, we will go through the vote and see if we can appoint somebody at this meeting.
Who do you want to go first?
I don't remember who was first. Um, I think that, uh, Jeff Golden was first. Was it Carrie Huckabee? Okay, Carrie Huckabee would be the first, uh, person that we'll be voting for and then Jeff Golden.
I'll make a motion that we untable this motion first.
I've got a second.
All right, have a motion to untable it and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. All right, we're starting with Carrie Huckabee. This will be a vote, uh, for Carrie Huckabee, appointment to IDB.
Michael Bell?
Pass.
Carl D. Bowden?
Pass.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Pass.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
No.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Jenkins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Pass.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Pass.
Joseph Stotts?
Pass.
Philip Stout?
Pass.
Cole Taylor?
Pass.
Blaine Wilcher?
Pass.
Anyone want to change your vote? All right, so this next one will be for Mr. Golden. Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Pass.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Lori Jenkins?
Pass.
Robert Hennessy?
Pass.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Pass.
Steve Lynn?
Pass.
Deborah Evans?
Pass.
Randy England?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Pass.
Carleen Brown?
Pass.
Carl D. Bowden?
Yes.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote?
All right, the vote is tied eleven to eleven.
I'd like to change my vote, please.
Too late.
Yes.
It's too late.
It's too late to change your vote on that vote.
Yes, Executive Haley.
You know, it's a process of, of filling the, the term of someone who had term limits placed upon theirs. When we began this journey back several months ago, uh, it was the duty and responsibility of myself and this commission to honor the resolution that said term limits for that office. And so the Industrial Development Board was well aware of that. They've done, uh, I think, two stories in the paper about Mr. Golden retiring. And I think they've even done a farewell party for him and we've done a resolution for him as well. I respect, uh, Mr. Golden and his efforts. And I think Mr. Golden could probably stay on as an ex officio and continue on any of those projects. But when I was doing the interviews and advertised that position, I spent countless hours doing interviews, qualified people for that position and had more qualified applications for that position than I have in a long time for anything that's vacant. And so, you know, the wishes of this commission is to either confirm or deny, uh, my recommendation. But I did recommend, uh, Carrie Huckabee after extensive, uh, research on her background and the assets that she really brought to the Industrial Development Board and marketing and working for Ben Lowman for years and, uh, and her technology that she's able through social media and, uh, digital imaging that, uh, that she's an expert in, that she would be a welcome addition to that board. So it's an unfortunate thing that we still have to continue, um, in this journey and not have a member. But I assume that Mr. Golden will retain his seat until the commission decides who fills that position. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, our, uh, Don, he's here as well. I'd be interested to see what he has to say as well.
Don?
Thank you, Commissioner Hilton. I'm glad to present my thoughts on this very important position. All of us know that we're all interested in the growth, prosperity of Warren County. All of us here have worked hard. Every time I've spoken, I've said, "Welcome to Warren County, the home of forty thousand economic developers." All of us are of that category. However, in this situation, we have a gentleman who has dedicated, from a volunteer standpoint, his efforts to bring economic development for a number of years, not only in the, on the Industrial Development Board, but he also did it as long as he was allowed to for the McMillan Electric Board, the blood, uh, promotion drives, and the hospital. He's done a number of things. Now, just like if he were a member of any other board, say the Fair Board, why would we take somebody off the Fair Board if they continue to do a good job? He's done so. In my mind, we have a known quantity here in Jeff Golden. He's was a part, he was in the car when the decision was made for our new hotel that everybody in the county thinks we need. He's done everything to help us. He, he's, he can take financial balance sheet and analyze it, which is a very important facet of this and needed on that board. I'm sure, and I will respect the wishes of this board. If you have someone that, that you feel would, would fill that slot better, I will honor that and we will work. In fact, many of my board members, I don't know whether they were appointed by the city or the county, because as soon as they're appointed, I feel like it's one board. And that's where my thoughts will continue to be. I appreciate you listening to me and thanks very much, Commissioner.
Mr. Alexander, could I address something if you would?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is not an issue of whether or not Mr. Golden is worthy of this position and to continue in his capacity like he has, 'cause everybody here on this board and, and the community is very grateful for what he has contributed to our community. Um, but opportunities for different individuals as time passes to get, give something different to the ID Board through Ms. Huckabee's skill set through marketing is a valuable tool. It takes a collaborative effort of each individual that sits on that board to make a very success. Now, I don't know if there's a breach of ethical protocol here for the Director of the IDB Board to be soliciting a candidate when- the IDB Board to be soliciting a candidate when the other person that's not here to defend herself. I guess that's a question that remains to be asked. But what really disturbs me is, last month, we changed a resolution that was longstanding since 2013. This court unanimously accepted term limits on the IDB Board. Recently, the Policy and Personnel Committee assembled and reneged on the suggestion that that was to be reversed. Now, my question is simply this. If this body was asked the same question about setting term limits on commissioners, we would certainly be on the bandwagon to ask questions as to why that needs to be executed. Did you go to your Board of Directors and pass a motion to reverse the resolution that was adopted by this court? Did you have a vote on that from everyone that sits on that board? Is that how that transpired?
I'm not sure I even understand your question, but we had no vote.
Okay, so someone, somewhere, had to initiate the conversation with Mr. Ruble to get him to change that resolution. Do you know who that person is? Because Mr. Ruble didn't wake up one day and say, "Well, I think I want to change this resolution to cater to a specific need." Because Mr. Ruble already said that. He wanted to see-
I'll shoulder the change, if that's what you're saying. I'll shoulder the change that I thought that there shouldn't be term limits if we're the only board that has term limits. Everything else had been rescinded. I think the Industrial Development Board was the only one that was left.
Well, but somebody had to initiate the conversation with one of the commissioners on this board to get that resolution changed. Do you know who that was?
No, no, I don't know.
You don't know who that was?
I don't.
Well, Mr. Cole Taylor said that Mr. Golden reached out to him and said that he wanted to come back on the IDB Board. Were you aware of that conversation?
I don't think there's any secret that he wants to come back on the board. He's done a great job. He's very effective on it.
Why would you go through having a proclamation and a retirement party for someone, then after the fact they decide that they want to come back on the board?
That's pretty simple.
Mr. Chairman. Don's not on trial here. No, I think we need to get to a point here where we can either vote or table this again until next month. Mr. Bratcher, have we done anything wrong by asking Don to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I don't believe there's any ethical violation in having Mr. Alexander give his opinion tonight. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
I have a question for Ms.-
Yes, Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Alexander, if we vote again tonight, and to address a new member on this, either Mr. Golden or Carrie, if Mr. Golden was not selected, would he be able to serve on this board as like an honorary member and still come, because it is volunteer, and with all the, with his years of experience, because it has been said that he would, that he did want to try to see through the completion of the hotel project for sure through, would he be able to serve on your board as an honorary member?
Yes, the same as Ms. Huckabee.
Okay, but he would be able to do that, and I'm sure he would be willing to.
Yes, and you would as well.
What'd you say?
You would as well.
I could serve on your board as an honorary member?
Sure.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Hilton. Mr. Charles Curtis, he told us that we were in basically violation of putting those term limits on. He was recommended. He was here. He voiced that opinion whenever he was here, and so I think that should be a dead issue. Mr. Don, I appreciate you giving your opinion. I also make a motion that we have one more vote tonight regarding this matter. All right, we have a motion to vote one more time tonight. We have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
We need to have a discussion.
All right. Speak to the motion, then.
If we have another vote, could we say, could I take an opportunity to say something about Mrs. Huckabee?
Yes. All right. Any opposed?
What are we voting on now?
We're going to vote one more time for the IDB replacement, either Jeff Golden or Carrie Huckabee. You get one vote. Would you like to speak now?
Thank you. I just, I had said this the last time, but she was not here tonight to be able to speak on her behalf, but I want you to know that she did take time, and she wrote a letter that I can read or I don't need to read, but Carrie did say that she's still very, very interested in serving on this board, and I know for myself, it's not a, for me, it's not going to be a vote against Mr. Golden, because before this started, he was, his term was up, and he was going to be leaving, so Carrie put her application in and showed her interest in wanting to be on this board. And Carrie does come with extensive marketing experience, and she does want to help with developing the website, working with the social media that would be involved, and trying to put in front of the businesses the type of county that we have and what they would be able to invest in, and clearly define to them what we have to offer in developing their business. But anyway, in her letter that she wrote, she did sincerely say that she is still very interested and would like to have the opportunity to serve on the IDB Board. Thank you.
Commissioner Bolden.
Before we vote, I want you to, it's something that we're going to have in our legislative package that you'll do, explain clearly what we're voting on. I think there could be still a little bit of confusion.
Yes. We had a question passed on-
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to speak something about Ms. Carrie Huckabee, if you all know. And again, I would not be voting against Mr. Golden either. I think he has served us, our county, very well, and he's done a phenomenal job. I do have questions about him retiring, and, but that's beside the point. Ms. Huckabee is visionary, as Commissioner Brown has mentioned, the things that she is capable of doing as far as social media, and that's the way of the future, whether we want to do it or not, it's going to, that's the way of the future. But the thing that many of you may not know, that she started, is a group called Power of 100 Women. I was invited to join this group, and I did, and it's a phenomenal thing for the nonprofits in our county. It also takes a burden off the county funding. We meet four times a year. There are now over 100 of us women. Four times a year, there's no overhead in this. No one makes any profit from it. Someone donates the facilities, someone donates the refreshments. The nonprofits are encouraged to apply. The night of the meeting, there are several chosen who address the 100 Women with what they do. After they make their presentations, I believe there are three that make the presentations, it's always narrowed down to three, the 100 Women vote on these three nonprofits. Whoever receives the most votes, every woman that night writes a check for $100 to that nonprofit. Families in Crisis, I believe, has received it. Kids of the Community has received it. Numerous, I can't even think of them all, but Ms. Carrie Huckabee is the visionary and the person who runs the, and I do think it's good to have some new ideas, someone with a different way of thinking, so I just wanted to present that to you and let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jenkins.
Okay, I'm a little confused. If we can keep Mr. Golden as an honorary member of the board and also vote on Ms. Huckabee as a member, I'm really confused here.
Well, I think, and I will speak for you, Don, but I think what he was saying was, anyone could be, could approach the IDB and become an honorary member, you know. Yeah, you wouldn't be able to vote, but you'd be, basically, you'd be a member, but you wouldn't have a vote, so it's not really the same.
But you have input.
You have input, but you don't have a vote, yes.
Mr. Chair, can we vote on this?
Yes.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. And that is this. We're at a stalemate, obviously. This board is divided evenly, and with what Mr. Curtis said, we have to have 13 votes. What if we changed the vote to the way it is in the document, that we either confirm or deny Executive Haley's recommendation? We don't need 13 votes for that, do we? We just need a majority.
We have to have 13 votes.
We do.
Yes.
Okay, even for that, okay.
All right, if no one else has any comments, we would like to call for the vote, and remember, we're going to be voting one time. You get one vote for either Mr. Golden or Ms. Huckabee. One vote, okay? Does everybody understand that? Okay, we're going to start with Mr. Golden first this time.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
No.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Pass.
Steve Lynn.
Pass.
Richard Grissom.
Pass.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Pass.
Lori Jenkins.
Pass.
Ron Lee.
Pass.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Pass.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Pass.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Pass.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? All right, this is for Ms. Huckabee. Blaine Wiltshire.
Aye.
Cole Taylor.
Pass.
Philip Stout.
Pass.
Joseph Stotts. Tyrone Spartman.
Pass.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Pass.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
No.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Pass.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Lori Jenkins.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Pass.
Richard Grissom.
Yes.
Steve Lynn.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Randy England.
Pass.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Pass.
Michael Bell.
Pass.
Anyone want to change your vote?
All right, it's 12 for Golden, 11 for Huckabee. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we table this until next month. Well, a second by Commissioner Ruble. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We're going to go to the next item, which is actually item number two, since number one was removed, and that is Budget Amendment GF-FY-19-20-4.
Pitch the resolution, please. It's a budget amendment to accept a three-star grant from the state.
We have a motion by Commissioner Prater. We have a second by Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to the motion? Roll call.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Lynn.
Yes.
Richard Grissom.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Lori Jenkins.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Motion passes, 23 yes.
Next item is Amendment GF-FY-1920-5, and this was amended from 15,000 to 10,000 for electronic monitoring, and I would entertain a motion for that.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, this came through Budget Finance and Financial Management, and it is basically establishing a line item which the state has mandated it pass unanimously through both committees and I so move.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Ruble. We have a second from Commissioner, I'm sorry, Spartman. Anyone else want to speak to the motion? All right, call the roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Lynn.
Yes.
Richard Grissom.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Lori Jenkins.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Motion passes, 23 yes.
Next up is item five, that is confirmation of the reappointment to the E-911 Board, and that is confirmation of Gary George.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman.
Commissioner Lee.
On November 4th, the committee met, and Executive Haley brought Mr. George's name up to be reappointed, and he's a vital part of the 911 Board with his background, and our committee voted unanimously to reappoint him to the 911. And I so move.
We have a motion. We have a second by Commissioner Stout. Would anyone want to speak to the motion? How many people serve on that board?
Seven or eight, nine, it's the mayor of the city, and the mayor of the county, myself, I represent the county commission, and then Mr. George, the Carter boy that works at Ben Lohman Telephone.
Jeff.
Jeff, and whom I'm leaving out, the lady that worked at Ben Lohman Telephone for so many years.
You also have your chairman. Next is Amendment GF-FY-19 20 dash six, and this is the amendment to accept an additional drug court grant.
Mr. Chairman, this also went through Budget Finance and Financial Management unanimously, and it is to hire an additional counselor plus benefits, and I saw move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ruble, second by Commissioner Owens. Anyone else want to speak to the motion?
How many people serve on that board?
Seven or eight, nine, it's, it's the mayor of the city, and the, and the mayor of the county. Myself, I represent the county commission, and then Mr. George, um, the Carter boy that works at Ben Lohman Telephone.
Jeff.
Jeff, and, um, whom am I, whom am I leaving out? All right, the lady that worked at Ben Lohman Telephone for so many years.
And you also have your chairman.
And the chairman, uh, which is Mark Ribble. And Kelsey, Ms. Kelsey, that worked at Ben Lohman Telephone for so many years, she's on there. So there's several on there. And then they have a, and then they also have a lawyer that comes in at every meeting, gives us updates.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Anyone else want to speak to the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is item 5A, and Commissioner England, I believe you have that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the redistrict committee that's coming up next year with the census and all, we'll be awful busy. I'd like to add from the ones that we appointed, Susie Devport, who's administrator of the election commission, Chuck Hayston, director of 911, and our county executive, Mr. Jimmy Haley, and I saw move.
We have a motion. We have a second from Commissioner Prater. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item is item number six. This is approval of notaries. Ms. Scott.
It's just a list for the notaries, there's only four over there tonight, so.
Motion is approved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bell. We have a second by Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Under announcements, you may have, it may have notes on your desk, this application for the IDVAC, the county will get a discount on that if you're interested in that, and Executive Haley, you've got some announcements.
I do have a couple of announcements. Tomorrow morning, at Essential Church Christ Exchange Club, we'll be doing the One Nation Under God Prayer Breakfast. So that invitation was sent out, I think, to all of you, and so that'll be in the morning. I also received notice also that on the 24th, at the Farmer's Market, there'll be a community Thanksgiving service and meal that will be open to the public, so I was asked to announce that as well. Of course, the shots at the Health Department tomorrow, and so they'll be in at 9 o'clock, and they will continue to give shots as long as they have the serum to inject. So, also, Christmas Parade will be December 7th, and so I'll be doing a mayor's walk as part of Warren Wellness, also the Census Committee, and the sound, the alarm team is going to be giving out smoke detectors, will also be as part of Red Cross, be a part of that walk. I'll be hosting, once again, the holiday breakfast for county employees on December 20th from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. at Warren County Middle School, and so once again, you're all invited. If you want to contribute something for more prizes or a gift card for us to give away as we did last year, and so that will be on December 20th. It's abbreviated date for school, but usually not too many students show up, but it'll still be in the cafeteria. And so, another thing as well, somebody gave input, Mr. Ben Rogers will be here on December 2nd and December 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 each of those nights to address training. I don't know exactly which order. He's going to do that nightly because he's been back and forth with me, but he'll probably concentrate on four or five of those topics that you gave me, and so it'll be on December 2nd and 3rd. If he needs an additional day to do more training, I think the 18th was, may have